I haven't gotten to you.
Good evening and welcome to the Village of Westmont Combination Village Board Meeting and Committee of the Whole for June 20, 2011. I'd like to begin by asking our clerk to please take the roll call.
Mayor Ron.
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Emery.
Here.
Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Klebenow is absent. Trustee Nero.
Here.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
Trustee Seneca.
Here.
Manager Searle.
Here.
Attorney Zemanek.
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern.
Here.
Fire Chief Trout.
Here.
Economic Development Director and Assistant Manager Kimbo.
Here.
Acting Finance Director Parker.
Here.
Public Works Director May.
Here.
A Human Resource Administrator Casey.
Here.
Deputy Fire Chief Weiss.
Here.
And IT, is your, are you the direct manager, Liljberg?
Here.
I'm sorry, you left and I didn't see you come back. Village Planner and Assistant Economic Development Director Malick. Sorry about that.
Thank you. We all rise and bow in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Forgot somebody, Ginny.
Forgot somebody, Ginny.
Oh, Carrie.
My Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
I announce Deputy Clerk K. Nick.
Here.
Thank you.
First item on our agenda before us this evening are the minutes of the Committee of the Whole meeting held June 2nd and Board meeting held June 6, 2011. Any corrections to be reported? Hearing none, moving right along, open forum.
Motion to approve.
Excuse me. Because it's a combination meeting, we have to discuss and then vote.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on the minutes? And we have a motion and do we have a second?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Any further questions? Roll call on the minutes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Okay, open forum. We have one request under open forum and that's from a Michael Dwyer at 18 East 56 Place. Mr. Dwyer.
Hi, I live on 56th Place, which was part of the Hidden View Sewer Restoration Project that I was surprised to find out has ended with our road in this condition. This is what our road looks like after a rain. This is what our road looks like a good day after a rain. So I called Norial a couple of weeks ago.
Just put them on.
So the contractors left, which wasn't a real big surprise since when the project started, the guys that cleared the trees did it amazingly in three days. Then we didn't see anybody for over five weeks, you know, during which time we were driving over sticks and the huge holes where the trees were. But the guys came back, finished the project on time. Well, what you guys considered the project was done on time. After a couple of weeks, I called to find out if they're actually going to finish the project, which we thought was to repair the road after tearing it apart. And I was informed that the project was over. Obviously, a huge surprise. I talked to Ron Searle as well to get more details. And again, you know, from what I talked to these guys about was, you know, the budget seemed to have been denied, not approved, which made me wonder how this can come to a project where everybody agrees to tear apart the street, but then when it comes to, hey, can we repair that street? It's no. I do have some other pictures. This is a corner of my front yard. You can see big hole sewer, fire hydrant. I have three-year-old twins. Okay, this is my front yard. Here's me in the hole. So you can see, I don't really think that's real safe for my kids to be playing in my own front yard with it like that. I just have a couple of other pictures so you can see some of the other holes down the street. You could see it's coming up over my knees. These are some logs in my neighbor's yard. Nobody lives there, so the house is still there but vacant. But again, this is right next door to me. I'm not sure, those were the only logs that weren't cleaned up for some reason. And again, here's another hole. I did take pictures of the potholes, but I didn't want to bore you with all those because there are a lot of them. Norial informed me that they would be, they're supposed to come by and fill the potholes. That obviously hasn't happened and I, you know, anybody that wants to drive down our street, don't do it after you just wash your car and if you have bad shocks, I really wouldn't advise it. So my point is, I wanted to show you how this was left. You know, I just, I don't understand how it was left like that, how the project, how this wasn't part of the project was to repair the street. And then when I find out that it's going to be possibly July before you even get bids on the project, then it's still got to get designed and built. I mean, it's looking like all summer that we're going to be like this. So I'm hoping to get some feedback or.
I'd like to give you your comments and have Steve May, our Public Works Director, who's behind you, perhaps give us some clarification at this time. Steve?
Yes, he's absolutely right. It's not that the project isn't finished. It was that, well, if you remember back, if you go way back, this is part of that Soli subdivision and we became the general contractors on this project. Last year, the, there wasn't enough funds to do the entire project, so at the Public Works Committee level, we all agreed that we were going to go out to bid in the middle of winter and get the underground portion done with the funds that we had approved. And it was timed so that when the budget was approved on time on May 1st, we could have gone right into the reconstruction portion, which would be all the above ground, the pavement repairs and the rest of it. So the underground proceeded on time and was completed and that is what's finished. So there was no, there is no restoration item in that contract because the next contract was supposed to go back-to-back with it. So we had all the asphalt grindings available from a different project and they're kind of just put across, they're kind of like we did temporarily last year when Burlington Avenue was under construction during Taste of Westmont. So it is, it is in there just to, you know, get a mingress and egress until we can get the next project done. Assuming that the budget's approved tonight, we can award the engineering contract, the engineering Phase Two design, which is the actual have the plants prepared to go out to bid, can be awarded at the very next meeting. And that's what led to that timeline. The earliest that this could go out to bid would be, you know, I could probably bring it back for award at the earliest, the middle of July, assuming the approval tonight. So it is about six weeks from when you, you know, approved the budget and had it been done in April, you know, we would have been in construction right now with the pavement repairs. So.
Typically, we have the budget approved before now, so we're late with getting that done.
But still.
Know that when we went out to bid and awarded the contract back in, you know, very early spring.
Budget approval or not, I don't think we can leave unsafe situations out there. There's got to be some kind of fill to at least fill the holes that when somebody's standing on them, they're ground level, not knee-deep. Something has to be done at least to fix the unsafe portions, bare minimum.
Right.
Can you do that?
Yes.
When would we be looking if everything goes out to bid and we get them all back, construction to start then?
If you, if it was bid in the middle of July and we, you know, did it just before the second meeting so that you could award it at that meeting, the contractor still has to, you know, do the bonding requirements and everything. There's usually about two weeks in there before you actually start construction. So you're looking at August construction.
How long to do it?
I'm not sure how many, you know, days are in the contract documents, but I'd say two, three weeks. It's pretty, you know, there is no, all the utility work is done, so it's pretty much just, you know, putting in the base of the road and start building the pavement. It could go, it should go pretty fast. Norial's not, Norial's on vacation at the moment. I don't know 100% what the status of the project is.
So the, you can go in there with your staff and Public Works and fill, fill some of the holes in that are unsafe and do whatever you can until they actually start the.
Right. I mean, particularly around a hydrant, there was an excavation there, so with all the rain we've had, I'm sure it's settling. But that contractor is longer obligated to us, so we have to do the repairs ourselves.
Okay.
Just to give you guys an idea, I mean, it's been six weeks now that, about six weeks since the other project's been done that it's been sitting like this, so.
That's about right.
Yeah.
So I implore that you guys approve the budget, please.
We apologize for the delay, but as you're well aware, we have a lot of budget constraints and things aren't timed just the way we normally would do things, so our.
No, I get that.
Apologies to you and your neighbors for that.
It's just weird when there's one project to tear apart and the part of the project to put it back together isn't approved, just seems like a weird concept, you know, regardless of budgetary constraints, especially when it's left in the, in the condition that it is. So, no, I appreciate everybody discussing.
The only positive, when it's, when it's all finished, it'll be a wonderful improvement for.
Yeah, we're going to have more traffic from Cass. We're not real excited about that.
Mr. Dwyer is right. It's not something we typically do and I think a factor, you know, was the state funding and delaying the budget this year, that we were waiting for some resolution there. But that's, this is not typically what we do by any stretch of the imagination.
We wouldn't have, we could have just not done anything in the last fiscal year and left it all for this year, but you know about the drainage concerns in that neighborhood too, so there was an interest in proceeding with the storm sewer improvement.
Absolutely.
You can see the drainage.
Spring.
That's what it is now. That's after.
Compared to what it was though.
Actually, I had a call from someone on that street telling me it was much better with this last rain.
Right.
So I guess it has had some improvement.
Yeah. I didn't see that.
But those holes have got to go. You're exactly right.
Private property. So I think I know what house you're talking about.
Okay, we thank you for coming in and we will proceed and our Public Works people will get in there as soon as they can to take care of some of those safety points that you.
Okay, I appreciate, I appreciate the discussion and filling a couple of those holes himself.
Got to keep those babies safe.
I know, it's crazy. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dwyer. Thanks for coming in.
Next, I would, I'd like to call our Fire Chief and his assistant up to the podium. Our Westmont Fire Department recently received recertification, national recertification as a fire department, as an excellent fire department. And I'm just wondering if you can give us some of the statistics that were reported in terms of how many communities are being evaluated and where we fall in terms of, in terms of the evaluation and the quality and the equipment and the service that, the wonderful service that you provide for our residents.
Thank you, Mayor. It was good to see you the other day at the exit meeting of our accreditation team that came out to Westmont. Four fire chiefs from around the United States came and reviewed the process of fire emergency management and emergency medical services for the Village of Westmont. This is our third five-year reaccreditation process that we've gone through. And worldwide, there are 234 other municipalities that are accredited. In DuPage County, there are two fire departments that are accredited. One is Naperville, which has a population of about 150,000. They have about 200 full-time fire personnel. And then the other one is the Village of Westmont. There were other municipalities in DuPage County who have been trying to become accredited and there were some that even lost their accreditation. So in DuPage County, there is two fire departments that are accredited, us in Naperville, and it's been an ongoing process, one that keeps our razor sharp. We have to make sure that our turnout times say what they, what they are. The team comes out, we have a 90, 90% ratio of less than six minutes to respond to emergencies within the village and along with training and just the whole process of running a fire department. And so it's been a real challenge for us, one that we took on 15 years ago. It's been a great, a great process and it's been a real team effort, not only with the team within the fire department, with training and emergency management and EMS and operations and administration and the Fire Prevention Bureau, but also the larger team, Team Westmont. The individuals came out, the fire chiefs came out and went to the police department or communications, spoke with Steve May, with Public Works and our water distribution program. And they are, they were elated at the high quality of personnel that we have in Westmont. I know they've came in and they've talked to Kathy Casey with what we do with HR and administration. So they touched all the bases here in Westmont, finance department. Each one of those, they said, were excellent. They added to the, to the numbers that we needed in which to become accredited. So it's not just a, a great, kind of like a crown for the fire department, but it's also for the village because it encompassed everything from the village manager's office and everyone that works together here as a team. So it's Team Westmont actually won on this.
Okay. Thank you. Dave, is there anything you wanted to?
No, other than I, I had some areas for training and EMS and those came back of the outstanding. And then fleet and facilities and they praised our fleet division, just not, you know, at the village here, but also from Lyle Woodridge. And also facilities for what they do for us. They praised our, our system that we have in place with doing the write-ups village-wide to handle things. I did a write-up this morning at 6:30 and someone from facilities was at the station at 7:15, you know, already working on it. So, you know, talking about class service that we have and work together as a team is definitely a team concept.
Very good. Well, congratulations to both you, Chief Trout and Dave Weiss. Job well done and keep up the good work for the village.
Thank you.
We all appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I would like to call Larry Forsberg forward for a presentation.
That's my other brother Larry.
Your other brother Larry, you're okay.
Thank you very much, Your Honor and members of the Village Board. Many of you are aware of a unique public-private partnership known as the Westmont Auto Mile. It consists of the following organizations. Alpha Motors, Audi of Westmont, Laurel BMW of Westmont, McGrath Acura, McGrath Lexus, Mercedes-Benz of Westmont, Oak Brook Toyota Scion in Westmont, the Village of Westmont, the Westmont Park District, the Westmont Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau, and the Westmont Special Events Corporation. We just finished the Westmont Cruise Into Summer Tent Sale on behalf of the Westmont Auto Mile, a two-week sales event designed to help these dealers be more prosperous, to sell more cars and therefore generate more sales tax dollars that can flow back into the Village of Westmont to support the quality services that our residents have come to expect and deserve. As a part of that Cruise Into Summer Tent Sale, one of the grand prizes was a three-day all-expense, well, not all-expense, paid a three-night Caribbean cruise for two, including round-trip airfare from Chicago for that deserving winner. And this winner had to be a military veteran. And we're pleased to announce tonight that that winning veteran is retired Colonel David Benjamin from the 101st Airborne Division. And on behalf of the Westmont Auto Mile, we would like to thank Mr. Benjamin for his service to our country. His service and the service of all veterans is greatly appreciated and valued in each and every day through the freedom that we enjoy in our great country. At this time, we would like to ask Mayor Ron to please come forward and present the ceremonial letter to Mr. Benjamin, signifying that he is in fact the winner of this three-night Caribbean cruise on behalf of the Westmont Auto Mile. And we also have Mr. Ozzy Halim, the General Manager of Audi of Westmont. Ozzy, if you'd like to be in the photo. And Mr. George Walcott from Oak Brook Toyota Scion.
I'm from McGrath Lexus. Kristy.
From McGrath Lexus. And we also wanted to indicate that this cruise into summer is on behalf, is in partnership with Mr. Mike Wolinski, the owner of the Weston Travel Agency at 134 North Cass. If you'd like to come forward, we're going to do a group photo here. Dave LaBrash, the President of the Westmont Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau, and Larry Forsberg, the Executive Director of the Westmont Chamber. So Mayor, if these gentlemen could flank you as you present the ceremonial letter to Mr. Benjamin.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Dear Mr. Benjamin, first, on behalf of the Westmont Auto Mile, thank you for your military service to the United States Army and to the United States of America and to all of us. Your military service and the service of all veterans is greatly appreciated and valued each and every day through the freedom we enjoy here in the United States. Secondly, the Westmont Auto Mile is pleased to present you with this enclosed letter, which also serves as a certificate to be redeemed by you for a three-night Caribbean cruise for two, including round-trip airfare from Chicago. Boy, I wish I was going. This letter is presented to you as, as the winner of the Cruise Into Summer Raffle for the Chicago area veterans. Further, the Westmont Auto Mile has partnered with Mr. Mike Wolinski, owner of the Weston Travel Agency at 134 North Cass here in Westmont. And Mr. Wolinski is at your service to help you plan your Caribbean cruise. The Westmont Auto Mile members wish to, wish you clear sailing on your cruise and again, we thank you for your military service to the United States. And this is from all of the members of the Westmont Auto Mile. This is the first year of their organization and we're hoping that they will continue this organization throughout, throughout the years. And perhaps next year, there will be another winner for a Caribbean cruise. But in the meantime, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. It's, it's an honor and it's humbling to receive the award. It was only after Larry called me the second time to let me know what was going on that I went home that night and asked if my darling wife, who was also a veteran of 30 years, she knew how I got the award. She told me, she confessed that she had submitted my name. We are very humbled and we very much thank the city as well as the Chamber of Commerce and also all of the automobile dealerships. I will accept this under the condition that if I can help you in the future to find other deserving military veterans, promote the, promote your efforts and to help work with, with veterans here in this community, I will definitely want to do that. So. You could help a little bit. You could take a song with you. You better talk to the boss. We have luggage.
For the record, Bill, yours, yours is the one that had the tape on and I don't know why they didn't pull yours out.
Yeah, right.
Well, thank you. On behalf of my wife, our two sons who are in the Army, we would like to thank everybody again for such a marvelous gift. It'll give us an opportunity to celebrate our 37th wedding anniversary in style.
Oh, nice. Send us a postmark and some photos so we can, we can share it amongst ourselves.
Okay.
Hold that up.
That's the official documents.
How much room you need, Glenn? I slimmed down just for this, but.
One, two, three, one more. All right. Thanks. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You'll be talking to people. Make an appointment.
Okay.
I mentioned Larry Forsberg and being the head of our chamber, I'm sure that he did an awful lot of the legwork in putting all of this together and promoting it and we want to thank him also for all the work that he does for our chamber and keep up the good work, Larry. Thank you. The next thing I would like to mention is that we would like to offer our condolences to Jan Barnett, whose husband Jim passed away very, very suddenly. It's been almost a week ago. They're very, very involved in the Village of Westmont. Many of us knew both of them. They were both board members for the Westmont Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association. Jan has recently joined the EMA, the Emergency Management Agency, truly great members and residents involved in the village. So our condolences to Jan and all of her family and all of her friends. And then the next thing I wanted to bring up, the last thing, is the Taste of Westmont. Another last reminder that the Taste of Westmont always happens the weekend after the Fourth of July. So this year, it'll be July 7th through the 10th. So make sure that everybody gets that on their, on their calendars. We're all looking forward and they still need some more volunteers. So what is the number that they're supposed to call? Is it 829?
West.
829 West would be the phone number. 829 West to volunteer to help in the Taste. And there are literally hundreds of people who will volunteer, who have already signed up to volunteer. So we're all looking forward to that celebration. And that is all that I have for right now. Moving right along, our village clerk, Virginia Simmsky.
I just want to remind our residents that Thursday night is Squad Car Night in downtown Westmont on Cass Avenue. Always draws a crowd, always a fun time. Lots of family events going on, so everybody come out Thursday night, bring your kids. The police will all be there to meet and greet and there's all kinds of fun things for the kids to do. And secondly, of course, Friday night is Concerts in the Park at Ty Warner. And don't forget the fireworks on July 4th at Ty Warner Park. Everybody has a good time there too, so.
That's right.
Those are the upcoming events. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Our village attorney, John Zemanek.
I have nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Village manager, Ron Searle.
Thank you. I'd like an executive session to discuss potential land sale price and acquisition and also wanted to point out that I distributed a handout concerning the Village Board Committees. We had talked about that subject at our last set of meetings and will be having this on the agenda for June 30th. I tried to look at the committees based on the discussion and address a couple of points that were made. One was breaking out the Public Information Committee as a separate committee, which is on the last page of the handout, and also breaking the membership of the committees into those that are permanent or staff appointments and those that would be rotated. So these are just out there in draft form for your discussion consideration. If you have any thoughts before our next set of meetings, if you want to let me know and we'll try to work towards preparing for that discussion. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Our trustee items, I'd like to start with trustee Seneca this evening.
Thank you. Also, just wanted to convey sympathy to Janet Barnett and her family and her children. Jim is a great guy, so he will definitely be missed here in town. Also, wanted to congratulate Robert Plowman and his group of volunteers for the Progressive Village Performance Network. We had the opportunity to go over to the high school over the weekend and see the first performance of our town. It was. It was just incredibly well done, very professional. They did a phenomenal job. They had three performances over the weekend, all very well attended. So I urge everyone to support that group. They'll be doing some things in the park this summer as well, some short plays. And they're going to have a play for acknowledging September 11th this year, so that will be very well done and very good, too. So kind of keep that in mind. And really, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Scott.
Nothing this evening, sir.
Thank you. Trustee Emery.
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Trustee Fleming.
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
And trustee Nero.
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. New business, 38 South Cass Development Permit. Board to consider development permit request from Burr Ridge Lighting to expand their retail storefront in the B1 Limited Business District.
Good evening, everyone. I'm back again. Tonight, I would like to ask permission for the board to consider us to knock two holes into the wall so that we can occupy 38 South Cass to extend our business. We have been well received in the Village of Westmont. Woo-hoo. And we love it here. We feel like family. And what we would like to do is expand the business so that we can bring in small pieces of furniture and accessories and put some of our clearance items into that other building. We are growing by leaps and bounds. It's very exciting for us, and we need more warehouse space, and this is the way to go.
Very good.
So you're putting in doorways?
Well, it's not actually doorways. What we would like to do is, I gave Shannon the plans, just cut holes. There were like four-foot openings in the front from the office area into the next building, and then in the back from the warehouse into the next building also, so that we can expand that way. There will be no electrical in the ceiling except for what is already existing there. There is not going to be anything that is permanent to the ground like we do in the showroom. And the only wall that is being constructed is the one between the physical warehouse and the showroom in the front. So not much going on.
It could be nice.
So this will be a clearance center?
Well, not so much a clearance center. What it's going to be is, we like to exhibit some furniture pieces so that we can sell, but we will hang what we have in the showroom now. We have some clouds in there, and we do have clearance items on the clouds. So we will just be moving those clearance items into that other section so that we can have all the new items in the main store.
Are you continuing with your place in Burr Ridge also, the warehouse?
No, just our electrical counter will be in Burr Ridge. We may bring a little bit of electrical supplies over because people have been asking for things that we don't normally carry, and because they're like five miles away and they close early on Saturdays, it would be great for us to have some receptacles and things so that when people come in, we have them. Because right now, we only have dimmers, and we don't have any fluorescents bulbs, and people are looking for those, too. So. Anything else?
I think it's great that you're already needing to grow.
I know.[819.25][819.25](laughter) It's a very exciting time. So we're really happy here, and everybody that works in the store loves coming to work in the morning. We're open till 5:30 in the evening so that we can get some of the train traffic that is walking over to the parking lots. Saturdays have been really busy for us, and people have just not even minded that we've moved from Burr Ridge to Westmont. It's been a positive move for us.
Great.
Awesome. Keep it up.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any further questions from board members?
So whenever you give us the okay, we can.
Might be in about 30 seconds.[868.25][868.25](laughter) Motion to approve, Emery.
Second, Seneca. Okay. We have a motion and a second, and if there are no further questions, roll call, please.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Thank you.
Was that fast though?
I think it was really fast.
Sorry you had to wait so long.
Well, knock down the door tomorrow.[897.12][897.12](laughter)
Next item, 41 North Cass, zoning and development request. Board to consider the following requests from Sweet Pea Consignment for the following: A, special use permit to operate a resale consignment shop in the B1 Limited Business District; and B, development permit request; and C, downtown development grant request.
Hello, everyone. Thank you. My name is Tracy Curtis. I am the owner of Sweet Pea Consignment. I've been running a seasonal consignment, just children's consignment sale for over a year now. I've had a couple of sales. I've had such a great response that I have decided to go storefront with it. This, I understand that there were some issues with, I guess the main reason that I needed to come here was to just explain the way I do business and the types of things that I get equality into the store and that type of thing. And my store is, always has been, a high-end merchandise. I do not accept low-end Walmart, Kmart types of brands. It's all clothing, accessories for children, decor, some furniture, but all high-end types of things. And I'm planning, this kind of gives you an idea of my feel or my look, and I know part of the other thing that is going up for a vote tonight is my awnings. My awnings are going to be a bluish color like this with white lettering to kind of stand out or pop out over there. It looks like they have green and brown awnings, and I'm hoping that that'll really stand out on the corner over there at 41 North. And I'm hoping for approval.
Thank you for submitting. The business plan was quite comprehensive.
Very extensive.
You've done his homework there.
He took some time into it.
Everyone keeps on saying that. I did put a lot of effort into it. I appreciate that. Thank you.
So you'll be open six days a week?
Right now, I have two little ones, three-year-old and a five-year-old. So the hours are planned on Tuesday evening, so it's going to be noon to eight on Tuesday to give the evening people. And then Wednesday through Saturday, 10 to four, eventually 10 to six, once my little ones are in school and I have the time to actually get over there more. So, yeah.
And did Shannon explain our facade grant program to you?
Yes.
We actually met last week, and the facade grant committee did recommend approval of a grant, both for the facade and for fire alarm system upgrades in the amount of $4,713 in total. So that's before you this evening for consideration.
Okay. Great. When will you be opening?
My plan is doing a soft opening August 20th and a grand the 27th.
Great.
Both Saturdays.
Have you had an opportunity to talk to Larry Forsberg from our Chamber of Commerce?
I talk to Larry all the time.
Okay.
I do all kinds of Westmont events. I do the Christmas.
Okay. So you'll be joining.
Yeah. So I talk to him a lot, and I actually get a lot of info from him.
Excellent. Good. He's a great resource.
Oh, yeah.
Any other questions?
Just a comment that I included language in this ordinance if you choose to approve it, similar to the last upscale consignment shop, just specifying it is for upscale goods in that flea markets, thrift stores, Salvation Army-type, goodwill-type stores are not allowed. And of course, that's not what you're selling, but it's in the ordinance.
Perfect. And actually, part of my, as you can see, children's posh consignment is even in my name, basically, so it better be posh.[1131.04][1131.04](laughter)
Motion to approve, Emery.
Second, Scott.
And that's item A. Trustee Emery.
Yes. Take these one at a time.
The special use permit.
Mr., any further questions? Roll call on point E.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Motion to approve, point B, for the development permit request.
Second, Scott.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Right, C.
Motion to approve, point C, for the downtown development grant request. Emery.
Second, Scott.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Paper's going on the windows tomorrow. I'm getting started.[1202.25][1202.25](laughter)
Good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Welcome you to the village. Next item, 257 North Cass Downtown Development Grant. Board to consider downtown development grant for the construction of a new awning, awnings at Nature's Best Market at 257 North Cass.
Hi, my name is George Kazantzis. I'm from Nature's Best Market, and I want to finish my awning on the west side of the street. We did the north side about a year ago, and we want to complete the other part of phase two of our awnings, pressing for grants to finish it up.
It's going to look nice. Yeah. Very nice.
Fred, did you want to add?
The facade grant committee did meet and recommend the application for the awnings. I think Mr. Kazantzis wanted to make an appeal directly to the village. He had some additional work that he had completed for brickwork, I think it was a tuck pointing and cleaning, George, and things like that. Unfortunately, he went ahead and had that work done ahead of time and paid for it prior to the time he submitted the grant request to the facade grant committee. The committee, in following and, we believe correctly interpreting the rules, indicated that they could not recommend that since the work had already been completed prior to the application. George, I need your opinion.
I didn't know. When I did this the second time, I saw tuck pointing. I called Fred. It was too late. I had already done it. Doing the awning, I wanted to do the tuck pointing before we get the awning in, get it done. And I just, I found out afterwards, and I'm bringing it up tonight. If there's anything we could do, we'd appreciate it.
Didn't we have a similar situation with Verdi and some brickwork? And we denied that request when Verdi did their facade.
I believe so.
Grant. We had a similar situation, and it didn't fit the guidelines of how the grant program was formed, and we said no at that time. So it's kind of a tough situation.
And because we already went through the grant application for the original awning on the north side, correct?
Yes.
So does the east side qualify, the awning itself?
Yes.
Or the west side, rather?
At the time the board approved the previous grant for the north side of the building, special permission was granted and leave given for this applicant to come back a second time within that three-year period so that a second grant application could be submitted and hopefully approved so that the awnings would match on both sides of the building. For cash flow purposes, I think Mr. Kazantzis could only do one of them at a time. And unfortunately, for a year or two there, we had the unfortunate situation. We had the nice new campus rectilinear awnings on the north side of the building, and we had the vinyl bubble-type awnings on the west side of the building. Just didn't match and wasn't very aesthetic.
It's going to look really nice.
So this grant is, the recommendation is that the grant is just for the work on the awning, not for the cost of the tuck pointing?
Yes, your honor. The total amount of the cost for the awning on the west side was $6,500. Our maximum grant award would therefore be 50% of that, or $3,250. That is the recommendation of the facade grant committee.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay. Any other further questions or comments? Roll call.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion.
Yeah. Second, Emery.
It's confusing.[1431.12][1431.12](laughter)
You have a motion and a second.
Yes, we do.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, 218 North Cass Development Permit Request. Board to consider development permit request for, from Furniture Designer's Outlet to operate a furniture showroom and interior design business in the B1 Limited Business District.
My name is Kim Saidi. I have, since 1965, I'm a graduate from Academy of Fine Art in Chicago. I have design studio and also furniture manufacturing facilities. Twenty years I was working in Chicago. Last 15 years, I have a factory in Burr Ridge. Now we get to a point that we need a retail outlet for our product. And so my niece owns a building here, so I thought that was the best thing, if I opened its door to show some of my product. And most of my client lives within suburbs around here. I have, I make the high-end furniture for residential and commercial use, mostly residential. And it is kind of very much design-oriented. It's not just the normal type of furniture. And so we needed some very attractive showroom to show our product. So we thought this location could be very centralized and would be the best for our product. So I'm thinking of opening that store and to work.
Okay.
I think being next to Lux, you will complement each other quite well.
Yeah, very much, yeah. Because he was kind of excited when he heard we are coming to there. Actually, most of our clients in this area, and in Burr Ridge, Oak Brook, and here in Westmont, I have quite a few clients. And the condition of economy is the way that we have to have a retail outlet. You know, that was old system that we could just show pictures. You know, we have, people have to see what we have to offer.
Now, when you say that it's going to be the Furniture Designer's Outlet, is it just a showroom, or is it going to be your outlet for seconds or marked furniture or anything?
No, 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 no. That is a misleading name, but you're right. No, we are not looking outlets. Some leftovers to bring it here, no. As a matter of fact, I have chairs in our line, cost $5,000, just one chair. And we do mostly custom, whatever client wants. Also, I have a patent called Plexicor, so I'm the only one that have that product. And most of our furniture, almost 80% of it, made with that particular product, and no one has anything close to it. And so, but we do interiors also, so sometimes we buy some products from other manufacturers beside what we make.
Okay. Let me ask a question of Shannon. Shannon, have you gone over the window, facade, all of that?
Yeah, we are going to, we are working on the ideas, what to do to make it attractive for the area. And.
Will sales made out of that store, will they go through this location, or will they go through the Burr Ridge location?
No, no, here, this is the retail space, you know, where people buy what they see.
Great.
So we will be advertising very heavily, so, because our product need to be shown. As a matter of fact, I've been talking to Interior Design Magazine and a few others to use us as a place to display our product. So, no, no, this is going to be retail.
Great. Good.
Shannon, did you wish to add something?
I was going to address trustee Emery's question, but Mr. Kim has done so unless there are further questions.
Any other questions?
I think it looks pretty neat and really unique furniture.
Very unique.
I look forward to seeing the showroom. I look forward to seeing the showroom.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks nice.
When do you think you'll open?
Oh, maybe in four weeks, three weeks, four weeks, you know, after.
Excellent. Good.
Good luck.
Excellent.
Okay, we have a motion.
Motion to approve, Emery.
Second, Nero.
Final discussion.
Just don't forget our Chamber of Commerce.[1757.62][1757.62](laughter)
Roll call, please.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Very good.
Welcome to Westmont. We're glad to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Next item.
Thank you.
July 4th Celebration Liquor License Waiver Request. Board to consider approval of a request from the Westmont Lions Club to waive the required $100 per day fee for the temporary liquor license needed for the 2011 4th of July celebration to be held at Ty Warner Park.
Motion to approve, Emory.
Second, Scott.
Discussion, roll call.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Next item, July 4th Celebration Special Events Requests. Board to consider approving a, an amplified sound permit request and a special events traffic plan using various one-ways and street closures around Ty Warner Park, 6:00 AM to 10:30 PM or until public, the public has dispersed after the fireworks presentation.
Motion to approve, Seneca.
Second, Emory, if it's the same as it was last year? Okay.
Any other questions? Have a motion and a second. No further questions, roll call.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Next item. Our police chief will come forward. Cass Avenue Temporary Road Closure, Police Squad Car Night. Board to consider the temporary closure of Cass Avenue, Burlington Avenue to Naperville Road for the annual police lights and siren parade on Thursday, June 23rd, 2011.
Motion to approve, Emory.
Second, Seneca.
Meeting Mayor and Village Board, as was mentioned earlier, this Thursday is our, did I jump the gun?
No, kidding.
No, we tried.
As a squad car cruiser nights, to be consistent with other parades in the village, we're asking you have Cass Avenue closed for the lights and siren parade from approximately 5 to 9 to about maybe 9:10, 9:15 at the very longest. And again, if anybody wants to come out, it should be a fun-filled event for the family. There's a lot of kids activities sponsored this year. Raffles, it'll special, that will benefit Special Olympics Illinois. And our volunteers are very working hard and putting a lot of gifts and everything together for the officers who will visit as well as their families and all our residents. So please come out and learn more about your police department and interact with officers from Northern Illinois. And again, tonight this request is so, to be consistent with the parade for street closure.
Any special squad car appearances that we should know about?
I'm not allowed to say so.
Okay.
Dawn King has given us, given, given me a surprise and she still won't give me permission to tell anybody. I guess I can put it this way, there is a concept car and she'll probably get upset when I, well, should we get the public there?
Right.
And police officers, there's a concept car that's coming from Indianapolis, we believe, they are scheduled to come. We tried to get other concept cars from Dodge, Dodge Chrysler, Ford and Chevy and we were able to get this one, it's a concept car that's coming up for launch for use probably next year. And hopefully that'll be there, so it's a very big, it's a very big surprise. Dawn King worked on that and got that for us.
Nice, very good.
Glad you told everyone.
I'm probably gonna get in trouble tomorrow.
It's gonna be a great event.
Further question? If not, roll call.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Thank you.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Next item, ETSB Intergovernmental Agreement. Board to consider an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with the DuPage Emergency Telephone System Board, ETSB, for financial assistance of specified emergency dispatch consolidation expenses. We have a request for postponement, postponement of this, of this item.
Do you need a motion to postpone it?
Yes.
Yes.
So moved, Emory.
Second, Nero.
Roll call.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Memorandum of Understanding, TCO, is Board to Consider an Ordinance Approving, Approving a Telecommunicators, a TCO, Memorandum of Understanding with the Illinois Fraternal Order of Police, the FOP, and all of the Telecommunicators, a TCO, covered by the union contract. We have a motion.
So moved, Scott.
Second, Emory.
Discussion. Here we go, discussion, roll call.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Next item, Fiscal Year 2011/12 Budget. Board, Board to hear the fiscal year 2011, 2012 budget presentation and consideration and adoption resolution.
Good evening, Village Board, Mayor. We, as you know, have had a series of budget meetings where we've gone over in detail many different aspects of the budget. Tonight, we've got a presentation which kind of highlights some of the high points of it and to give the residents and those watching a little bit of information about it as well. I'd like to start off by expressing gratitude and thanks to all of the people that have worked on this process. It's definitely been a collaborative effort from the departments, the department heads who've prepared the budget and been able to answer questions, to the village board and all the hours and time that they've devoted in budget workshop meetings and looking over the budget, coming up with ideas and asking questions and, you know, getting down into the details and we're grateful for that and thank you for all of your time. And a special thanks to Ron for kind of pulling the whole process together. So I'd like to start off with a village-wide overview. This is sort of the very large picture. You can see we have a total net right now of a deficit. We're expecting more expenses than revenues of about 1.3 million. However, you have to keep in mind that a lot of these come from expenses that were originally budgeted in prior years. We had the money last year, we didn't get a chance to do the project, so we're rebudgeting it this year. And you can see those are listed down there and they exceed the deficit. You'll also notice that one thing that was discussed at the budget workshops is a one-year moratorium on vehicle purchases, so that is also part of this budget. For the general fund, you can see we have a general fund deficit of about 296,000. However, you'll also notice we've got several expenses in there for transfers of monies to other funds. So we have transferred $450,000, which will be transferring the amounts that are generated from the local motor fuel tax from the general fund into the capital projects fund. Historically, this money, well, last year this money went into the general fund. This coming year, we're gonna be transferring it into the capital projects fund. However, at the end of the year, as needed, we may be able to take a little bit of that back if the general fund needs it. And we also have $665,000 that, in addition to the one-year moratorium on vehicle purchases, we're also taking this amount out of the supplemental sales tax, which has historically gone to the vehicle replacement program and instead using it to fund transfers to these various programs. So it's an additional 215,000 to capital projects. We're gonna be putting 350,000 into emergency reserve fund and then repaying a loan from the water department for 100,000. This chart shows the past history of our actual figures of revenues and expenses. And as you can see, initially back in 2003, expenses were significantly higher than revenues and over the past several years, they've been brought much closer together. This shows the village-wide expenses and as you can see, for the past several years, we've had the budget significantly higher than the actual expenditures, which is a good thing. We try to be conservative in our budgeting, we try to estimate high for expenses and low for revenues. And then as the budget goes, as we're going through the fiscal year, the department heads have done a very good job at limiting expenditures and not spending money on the budget just because it's there in the budget. They really take a good look and see what is needed each year and the fact that our actuals come in so far under the budget is their diligence. As you can see, this year, we're actually budgeting a little bit less overall in expenditures than we did last year. Here are a few highlights of items that are included in the budget and obviously there's many more things included in the budget, but I just wanted to run through some of the things that may be of special interest. First of all, we're including replacement of 40 parkway trees. We are continuing to fund the downtown development grants, there's no change in that, but we just wanted to make sure everyone's aware that that is still there and available. We're funding the comprehensive plan for 120,000. Now, as you may recall, originally we had planned to pay 60,000 of it last fiscal year, however, due to timing, that's actually going to be recorded in this and that's part of the carryovers that we talked about earlier. We're also budgeting 30,000 for a TIF study and Hidden View Drive is included in this budget and that's the project that was discussed earlier at this meeting. And then we're also looking at transferring 350,000 to reserves. Just sort of for information, here's some expense items that were kind of reductions from budgets or things that we're saving. So we were originally planning to have about 640,000 in vehicle replacements due to our moratorium that's been postponed. We're looking at, we have, as you know, consolidated dispatch and we're estimating that'll save about 220,000 each year. As was discussed at the last budget meeting, the paramedic contract was approved and they were able to negotiate a savings of about 75,000. Due to the refinancing of the loans, which we did last year, we were able to save about 23,000 in that expenses. And then due to the adjustment of planning for the number of officers, we're able to save 157,000. So in this past budget, we've budgeted for, last fiscal year, we had budgeted to have 40 sworn officers, we're now looking at 38 sworn officers, however, that is still more than we actually had last fiscal year. Last fiscal year, you know, as of April 30th, we had 36 sworn officers, so this budget is to go to 38 sworn officers, but it's lower than last year's budget. This is a little bit more detailed list of some of the preliminary cuts. There's obviously more things and these stand for different things. I'm not gonna go through and read every one of these, but I did wanna mention that at least, just so the boards are aware, for the first three, the Chamber of Commerce, Village Calendar Newsletter, those are reductions in the budget amount, but not actually a change in a program. Last year, we had budgeted some of them a little bit higher and then made some adjustments during the course of the year and these are more consistent with actual costs now, so simply reduction in the budget, but there's no change from our current program. This slide shows the, basically the same information that is on the fund summary sheet, which was distributed to you. This shows in the general fund, you can see the total budget amount and the percentage increases. There's a couple of things I wanted to point out. First of all, when you look at the total general fund and you see that it went up 10%, that seems like a lot. You will notice the next line right underneath it shows the amount if we were to exclude those transfers. So we have about a million dollars worth of transfers, as you can see, 1.1 million. Now, if you take away those transfers, which are not really expenses, they're, you know, just moving money around, if you eliminate those, we're only looking at about a 4% increase. And something very similar occurs with the fire department. You'll notice there, they're at 10.6%, however, they have 100,000 of that is a grant, which, you know, we're not opposed to increasing our expenses when we also increase our revenues to offset those expenses. They've also got 100,000, which is their portion of funding the consolidated dispatch, which used to be funded straight from police, so there's another 100,000. There's also 100,000 that was added in for shift incentives and specialty team incentives at last budget workshop. If you take all those things out, they're closer to about 3% increase rather than the 10.6. The budget does include some adjustments for personnel. We're looking at administrative assistant moving from part-time to full-time, a community service officer position moving from part-time to full-time. We're, as we mentioned, the sworn officers were at 38, which is down from 40, but up from the 36 we had as of April 30th. And we're looking at a little bit of additional cost for part-time code enforcement. We're also continuing to maintain vacancies as we've done in previous years. We, this budget is able to include a general wage adjustment for non-union employees of 2.5%. As the board will recall, several years ago, the union employees took a pay cut, which was about the equivalent of 2.5%. So this amount, it's no coincidence, but this is the same amount, which is to restore them back to what they were making several years ago. And then you also have the employee insurance contributions listed below. This chart shows the village-wide revenue and with revenue, it's sort of, you'd hope it'd be the opposite of expenses, where you'd budget low and your actual would be higher. You can see that did not happen in fiscal year 2009, 10, as you're all aware, that was when we had some difficulties with the economy. However, we are looking this year like we're doing better and projecting a little bit more revenue than last year. This gives a breakdown, so you can kind of see the different amounts, that the different sorts of revenue streams make up and I won't go through all of them, other than to point out some of the major ones. We've got sales tax, which is about 26% of our total revenues, property tax, about 19%, water sales, about 20, and you can see all of them for your information. Our total revenues went up about 9% and you can see some of the reasons for that. A large portion of it, 665,000, is what went up in the general fund. It's the money we talked about that's not going to the vehicle replacement program, it's going to the general fund, which will be then used for those transfers. Sales tax has gone up 250,000. Police pension, property tax increased. As you'll recall, the board had decided a couple of years ago that as the police pension annual required contribution increased, the property taxes and the property tax revenue for that would also increase. And then there's about 400,000, which it's not an increase in property taxes to the residents and simply moving it from one fund to another. This slide shows the sales tax revenue, which, as you recall, made up about 26% of our revenues. The teal line, the light blue line, is for the current fiscal year. And as you can see through this past fiscal year, it's done significantly better than the orange. You know, it dropped a little bit below it down in November, but pretty much it stayed at the orange level, which is last year or above. So right now, we are about 250,000 up from where we were at this point in time last year. We've not received our last month's worth of revenue from the state yet, but we are projecting to exceed our budget by 295,000. But again, to be conservative, we've only increased our budgeted amount by 250,000. This shows our property taxes, which was another large portion of our, excuse me, of our revenues. And as you can see, our assessed valuation actually decreased. It's gone up historically, took a little bit of a decrease in 2009 and then significant one in 2010. This shows the property tax rates and as you can see, the police pension, which is the orange line, did go up back in levy year 2009, fiscal year 2011, at which was the time where the board had decided that we needed to fund that at the level that the actuaries were recommending. And so that also had a large increase this year. And then you can see the red line for IMRF went down, while the blue line for ambulance went up, which was that 400,000 we talked about moving from one fund to another. These next couple of slides just go through sort of an overview of the process, mostly for the benefit of the public and those that are watching this for the first time, kind of an overview of the budget workshop meetings that were held. So we had our initial budget workshop meeting on April 18th, where we did an overview of the budget. On April 30th, we made a couple of adjustments with utilities account as well as eliminated proposal for downtown retail rent subsidy. On the 23rd, we, the board's direction was to adjust from the planned budget of four police officers down to two. At the June 1st budget workshop, the vehicle replacement plan was discussed and it was the direction of the board at that time to suspend the purchases for that one-year moratorium, as well as to divert a year, for this one year, some of the revenues from the supplemental sales tax for the various transfers that we've discussed. Additionally, at that budget workshop, there was a reconciliation report, which was presented from the departments. The board had asked the departments to prepare a list of, kind of a reconciliation of all the individual line item detail. That was discussed in depth at that board meeting and some adjustments were made as a result of that discussion. At this last budget workshop, there were a few additions. In the fire department, the direction from the board was to increase the money set aside for the citizens' fire academy, as well as shift in specialty team incentives. In the public works department, the board's direction was to increase some training in, both in the general fund and the water fund, and to maintain the current drafts, budgets, projections for fuel costs. Additionally, we discussed the supplemental sales tax revenue and it's determined that we would use 100,000 to repay a loan from the water and put 350,000 into the reserves. And additionally, the local gasoline tax, the decision to move it to capital was the direction we received at that time as well. Going forward, we will have a draft appropriation ordinance available, will be published in the paper, that the, it will be available and will be made available on July 6th. And then we're looking at the appropriation hearing and potential adoption on July 18th. During the budget workshops, there were several, several items that were identified as things that were items we could discuss in the future. Those included conferences and training, the downtown retail rent subsidy, the Westmont Center, vehicle replacement assumptions, the tracking of utility counts at 500 North Cass and the village calendar. I don't know if there's any additional questions or comments from the board members. I know this has all been discussed in detail previously.
Nice, very nice synopsis. A lot of clarity, very good, thank you.
And the 40 replacement parkway trees, the $10,000, does that include the cost for putting them in? putting them in?
Yes, that is our, we are gonna be putting them in in-house, and so it's the cost to purchase the trees, and we would be using our staff time to put them in.
So that includes the staff time, the price of the staff time to do it?
Well, that's our wages. That's in the wages. Regular wages.
So the trees are $250 apiece, then if I...
Roughly.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Spencer, the first slide on village-wide overview. I know what you said about some of the carryovers, that they were budgeted last year, but the funds weren't spent, therefore, we have the money left over. What this slide represents, however, when you look at it, is total revenues, not, and it says includes carryovers. Therefore, either the slide is wrong and total revenue should include the carryovers, where we would not have such a net loss or a budget deficit, or something's very wrong, and it would not, in my mind, be fiscally responsible to approve a budget where there is a shortfall of a million, almost a million four. So if this is gonna be on the website and there is an explanation that the total revenue includes the carryovers, it better include it.
The, the carryovers have to be included in the expenses. The revenues are the monies that we get in during the course of the year, and the expenses are the money that we spend. Since we're not, so the carryovers can't be considered as revenue, they're as cash carryforwards, and so there is an additional sheet in the budget which shows the cash carryforwards, and I can...
But I think the question is...
You can note on it, but go ahead.
The 31 million, does that include the numbers that are listed below as carryovers?
The 1.3 million net includes, the 32 million in expenses include those items that are listed below as carryovers, because they have to be budgeted again, because we're anticipating that they will be expended. The 31 million in revenues has not been increased by the amount of the carryover, because the revenues are based on what we expect to receive this year. So it doesn't take, this slide doesn't take into account the money that's sitting in the bank account that we received from prior years to pay for these projects.
Well, does your general fund number reflect it, the carryovers, that the money's still sitting there?
The, the funds carryforward sheet that is included in the pack that was distributed does show the amounts that's, that's sitting there. It's, I believe it's the third page in there. So this is showing the estimated cash balances, which are used to fund a lot of those, and I did not include it on the slides, but the estimated cash balance in, so for example, in the capital projects fund, where we have some carryovers, where we have a cash, estimated cash balance right now of about $1 million. So you'll see, as we carry through the projected cash balance, at the end of the fiscal year is gonna be $700,000. The total cash balance, so while we are gonna be spending more than we take in during the course of the year, because of the money that was previously in the account, we're looking at a cash, total cash balance of about $8 million at the end of the fiscal year.
Then I think that what you have to do in all fairness, so that when people look at this and start screaming, if it, you know, because you've gone through everything in great detail. I commend you for that. It's a, I know the work that you put into this, but they're gonna wanna see things on the website, and if the easiest thing to look at, rather than the entire budget, is your PowerPoint, this needs to be changed to reflect this within, which includes the estimated cash balances.
Sure, we can certainly make that change.
You will come under great fire if it doesn't show it.
Just put this page.
We can explain it.
Okay.
We can add another slide that goes through it and covers the carryforward.
I mean, we get it, but like Ellen says, you know, it looks...
Absolutely, it's a great representation.
Yeah, you're totally missing the entire cash bal, estimated cash balance factor in your overview slide, and it's, it does you a great disservice unnecessarily, as well as us.
We can certainly put another slide before it goes on the website.
Which is a pretty, pretty astounding cash balance compared to other communities.
Yes.
We're in good shape. I mean...
Yep. Yeah, we can certainly add that.
Okay.
Great, nice job.
The only thing I'd like to say dealing with this, I can honestly say in all the years, and I think Trustee Seneca can agree with this, this is probably the longest process we've gone through of budgeting time and what we've dealt with. I will also say that it has been tried and true. This budget's been picked apart, it's been put back together, pieced together, line by line, item by item, questions back and forth. We have put our budget director through a grinding situation, as well as all the department heads in putting their heads together with us. I want to commend everyone for the extra time and effort that's been put forward in this, and hope that everyone understands that this budget was not taken lightly. There was a lot of things that were taken into consideration, and thank everyone for the time and effort, and my fellow trustees, village staff, for all the work that's been put forth in this. Thank you very much.
I was gonna say that several years ago, when Spencer started working in the finance department, he was sent to a workshop through GFOA, I think it was like a budget...
I think it was budget analyst boot camp.
Boot camp. So I was gonna say, I think he's been through the real boot camp this, this particular experience.
You've done a phenomenal job.
Trial by fire.
Done a great job.
This was his initiation.
Yeah, rites of passage.
Yep.
Good job.
We're all proud of you, Spencer.
You did a great job, yes.
We're fabulous.
Thank you.
On page four, you've listed preliminary cuts. There are some cuts in service that are going to, in one way or another, affect the residents of, of the village. And one of those that I think is affecting us right now is reducing the tree trimming and also reducing the speed at which trees that have been trimmed are being picked up. I've gotten a couple of comments this week, why aren't they out there picking up all of our brush? Well, the brush is being picked up by the regular staff, and we have not hired the staff of college kids and high school kids during the summer that normally would be helping to do that. So there are some areas where it may affect our residents, but we have no other choice. And as soon as the funds are available, it will be our intent to restore, once again, all of the services that we're providing our residents. And basically, they're still getting most of the, of the services, but there are a few areas, and we've also gotten complaints on condition of streets. We need to seriously look at a program to upgrade our streets, which are in disrepair in many sections of the village, and find out as soon as we can if we have some alternatives to speed up a program to improve some of these streets before they reach the point where they're gonna cost a fortune to bring up, bring up the snuff again. But I too would like to thank you, Spencer, for all the time and effort in being the first time that you've done this, under the supervision of our manager, Ron Searle, and through the help of all the department heads. We, we thank all of you, and we will, we will continue on to do the best that we can as a village for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could just add two points of clarification regarding the brush pickup program. Part of the challenge has been there, as the mayor alluded to, hiring our summer staff. So once this budget's adopted, we'll move forward with that, and any sort of challenges that we've had there should, should be eliminated. The other comment I wanted to make is included in this budget is a street study. It's something we've talked about for several years. It's been a few years since we've done that to help prioritize the condition of our streets and help us plan for next year's budget in terms of which streets are gonna be priorities for replacement repair.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. No further questions. We have a motion.
So moved, Seneca.
Second, Emery.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Finance ordinance number four.
We have before us on this 20th day of June 2011, a finance ordinance in the amount of $1,111,435.57.
Motion to approve, Seneca.
Second, Emery.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Purchase orders.
Motion to approve is a block for $97,057.2.
Second, Emery.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Okay, now, unless there's something else to come before the board at this time, I would entertain a motion, as requested by the manager, to go into executive session regarding potential land sale, dash, land acquisition.
I have only one thing, Spencer.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second, Nero.
Roll call.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Thank you. We are adjourned to executive session.